Like to call this meeting of a joint meeting to order of the SLIF board at three o'clock on December fourth.
I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Woodstock Village Board of Trustees at three o'clock on December fourth. Do you want to take over the agenda, Ray?
Yeah, additions and deletions. I don't have any.
It's recording, right?
Okay, no additions and deletions. Is there a business comment? No business comments. Okay, department head presentation for FY twenty six budget. Who's up?
So I want to thank both boards for coming together today to start the budget conversation. Twenty six. I want to start off with an apology. I know it's a little bit rushed right now. We prioritize the water system and the water system. So with that, our staff is kind of busy throughout October when we're normally in these meetings. But I do appreciate the finance department and all department heads who have come together to kind of work on the budget quickly. And with little notice, our age presents their challenges, their issues in the budgets in front of the boards today and tomorrow morning. Some things I want to kind of highlight large picture is the original goal this year was to zero budgeting, which is, as we talked about before, kind of creating a budget that you start from zero and work your way up instead of starting from previous budget years and kind of just level funding. Due to lack of time on our end, we just couldn't fully do zero budgeting. We had times worked with department heads to go through the budget completely. So what you have in front of you is kind of a hybrid of standard budgeting along with some kind of zero budget. And we've got to try to put together to assist them as the finance department, myself and the boards work through the budget over the next month. We'll drill down on what should be budgeted, what shouldn't be budgeted and kind of go from there. The other thing I will mention is, I don't have the goals in front of me, but the SLIF board and the trustees did put together goals. We worked on over the summer and into the early fall. Those goals should hopefully guide us, you know, through this process when it comes to budgeting and what we want to fund. The point of the girl, the goal is to revert back to them and kind of have a sense of some kind of guidance on what the budget should be based on what we want our actions to be as a municipality. So that is what I have for you. We're working internally on an administrative budget, which would take the department headed budget and kind of fix it and present it to the boards with a potential tax rate. We'll have that to you relatively soon. But that's why I have kind of high level. I'll take any questions before I turn it over to Chief Green. Okay, so what we told the department heads, kind of fifteen minutes half, so kind of a five to seven minute overview of their budget. Their successes, the last two fiscal years, challenges they see ahead, and to give the board some time to ask questions to the department heads on their budget for FY twenty six or kind of our big picture, what the department's going through and what they see going forward. So with that, Chief Green, so yours.
Well, good afternoon. How's that?
Good afternoon, David.
Favorite time of the year, budget time. So challenges and successes, I'll start off as pretty easy with us. Our successes were, we did not do to any of our cause, kill anybody. So that's a plus. All right. Challenges are obviously my personnel. Keeping and maintaining people and having people in events, my biggest challenge. Nothing you haven't heard before. Moving forward, replacement of equipment is going to be my biggest challenge as well. So if you're ready, I'll start on the ambulance budget. And I don't know if you want me to go line by line or just highlight the big ouches. So obviously, you know, this is a contract year for union employees. We've come to a tentative agreement and that is in reflected in this budget. So I'm not going to go by those line by line. If you like, guys can read salaries and benefits. I think we got a great deal out of the union. They work well with us and we're in a good place and hopefully ready to present to you guys fairly soon. Moving down through operating supplies, the big change was medical testing. We're going to offer cancer screening to all of our firefighters. It's pretty much becoming a requirement. The state may assist in that in a future, in the future, but right now they're not prepared to. So you can see an increase from medical testing of $250 per year to $5,550 per year. And what that will be is a company that comes in-house once a year. Three pre-start employees and existing will have a baseline on pre-start and existing will have where they are now and we can track if any of the cancers or if any results need more investigation of cancers. So.
Chief, is that just like imaging, like x-rays?
No, it's actually blood work.
Blood work.
Supposed to be the best there is. I'm not a doctor, but that's what they tell me. And actually, it was reasonably priced compared to many imaging. This is actually cheaper. They say it's much better.
And the common, I would say, like occupational cancers would be?
Yep, that's what they're going to be.
Okay, and those are like lung cancer. I'm, yeah, okay.
And actually, they don't specifically target occupational. They'll hit anything.
Okay, great.
But if we get a baseline from them moving forward pre-employment, we can track it and say, yep, fires did it or no, you had this and need to go get it checked out.
Yeah, great.
Uncollected accounts, you can see we raised that a little bit too. Sorry, people think we all have young eyes here. Ninety-eight thousand, thank you. And that's on par with our trends. So. Moving down to ambulance vehicles, the biggest increase was for ambulance three is going to need a new set of tires next year. And that line went from twenty-five hundred to. Next page. The only increase on the top section is paramedic class. Typically, we get grants, but if we don't, this is going to be able to allow us to cover the full cost of the class. So we got grants on the last one. I don't, we got somebody starting school in January. I don't know what the cost is going to be yet, but hopefully we get some grants to cover that. So.
Can you speak to the importance of having them go through paramedic class?
Say that one more time? Yeah, yeah. So paramedic is the highest level you can obtain to work in the field. And right now, Woodstock only has two that are live even close in this area. One is Rodney and the other is Jen Jennifer Hutchins. Just put through class and I'm confident she's going to pass, so we'll have two locally. As far as that, we have some part timers, but those are the people that that can give drugs, do advanced airways, cardiovert people, do all kinds of stuff that most people can't, basics and AEMTs. So there's three tiers, basic AMTs, paramedics. And paramedics are really, I would say roughly forty percent of our calls require a paramedic, maybe not quite that much. So we have to wait for either somebody from Hartford, Lebanon, or Rutland to come and assist. So we're trying to staff at least one person on every cruise have that. Let's see. Looks like we have ambulance communication. One of the new technologies we want to add is a phone service to our tablets. Because right now on the phones, we send EKGs to the hospital and other such things, and it's really hard to do on something this small. So we already have tablets in the vehicle, so we want to add cell service to those tablets. The capital budget. Just so you're aware, the twenty twenty-three ambulance has been ordered. Was supposed to be here by now. It is not here. Hoping next spring or this coming spring, if you will. Right now, we have $245,000 in the bank for that. I put in twenty-five thousand. Twenty-five thousand from this year's capital budget will go into that and we are looking for forty thousand in next year's budget. And I know if we get the ambulance service sooner, we'll be in a little bit of trouble, but that will give us a total of three hundred and ten thousand for a thorough, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So if you have a preference of increasing that now rather than taking out a loan and paying interest, that's your call because we're only roughly, you know, forty thousand.
So if we allocate eighty-five thousand dollars, that should cover the full cost of the ambulance this year?
Yes. Correct. I don't know when it's going to show up, this spring or next fiscal year summer. All right. Any questions on ambulance? Loan to fire.
Oh, sorry. I had a question. I know this has come up before this year when we've talked about writing off the ambulance, the unpaid ambulance bills. And I wonder, I know you said it's, it's common practice to treat these as soft bills. But I wonder if there's a world in which we could investigate sending some of them to collections?
Oh, it's not some of them, it's all of them.
All of them.
Yes, they all have to go. The company that would, would do it gets a percentage of every bill paid. And that, that's your. So but remember your neighbors that are, you know, not doing well, doesn't have insurance, may live right next to you, and we're going to send them to
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the com, the inverse of that is also maybe like people who don't live here, who are using our services, right?
So I've done the research. It's, it's more of a majority of people that live here.
Yeah, I, I just feel like if we're going to ask the taxpayers to pick up the tab, then we should ask the taxpayers to pick up the tab and, and maybe they're fine with it. But the, you know, the number does increase every year. Ninety-eight thousand dollars is not insignificant.
No, but you do have to remember, we increased, increased our rates.
Yeah.
So we were hovering around forty thousand and that increased almost in double our ambulance call price. So that's reflective. So it, you know.
Yeah, but I also think there's a world in which like, I mean, and Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, we've never declined someone who wants to be put on a payment plan for for ambulance bills. So I think there's a world in which maybe it's not necessarily collections, but we communicate what a payment plan looks like.
They already do that.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. And people have signed up to do it and then never do.
Okay. Because right now the process is three letters?
Yep.
Okay.
And some phone calls. And if they, we talk about payment plans, credit cards, however, we can get them on.
Okay.
And Chief, who makes those calls? Is it you or is it?
Yep, sometimes I will if it's a difficult person. Just, you know, uses bad language and she'll say, take care of this. All right. Any more questions on the ambulance? Okay, we'll do fire. So fire again, salaries, there is some increases. Most of those are just the annual three percent. And whatever benefits will be this year. Moving down to operations, increased our fire prevention line. That's mainly so we can get some people in classes and get them certified. Now, I'm the only one in town certified, so if I'm out of town, well, people may do it. It's not early on the up and up. So I'd like to get them certified. So that's the reason for that increase. Nothing on the rest of that page. The following page, you can see rescue one maintenance went up. That's hopefully the amount we're going to need to get it inspected. Last year, they gave me a long list, the frames. And spring setup is having some problems. So. We will Band-Aid it and try to limp it along. The fire truck payment for our current engine was just paid off this fiscal year, so that is no longer in there. Anything big? The only thing I do want to discuss with you is emergency services building, our equipment and repair maintenance. And my feeling is a little low. Because I think at this year, at this point, I'm already up to eleven thousand because we've had some heat issues. Nothing is under warranty anymore. And I know, I know, it's a new building. But, you know, some of this stuff just gives problem boilers and, and such. So if you're so inclined, we should think about increasing that rather than me going, you know, over budget and you looking down your nose at me. So, but again, it's your.
That be a permanent repair maintenance?
Yes. Right now, it's budgeted for seventy-five. Pretty, pretty small for a very big building.
And do you know if there are any money on the police side?
Yeah, we take on the cost. The town takes on the cost of the whole building through the fire department. Yes. The village does not pay for that building, but they do contribute to propane and they pay their own electricity. So we appreciate the village. I see. Capital reserve, this is kind of a big one. As you know, we're getting ready to go out to bid for engine one, which will deliver it in four to five years for a cost of one point one-ish, two-ish million. Right now, in the bank, I have a hundred and eighty-five thousand. I put in additional hundred thousand in capital reserve and I don't know what your plans are. If you want to try to make payments to ourself every year, so when this is arrives, we won't have to pay a hundred and one million with interest. Or four hundred thousand. I guess my question is, do you want to up that up to like two fifty? You don't have to give me an answer right now, but it's food for thought, you know, do it over the next four years. But a hundred thousand over four years. And as you can see, capital capital reserve, we do have some items such as the utility truck, we need to start thinking about replacing, put in fifty thousand for the UV, one of the ATVs, fifteen thousand. And other than that, there's nothing real substantial, but you will be getting my capital budget worksheet and we have some trucks that are going to need to be replaced fairly soon. And those are reflected in. I don't know if you wanted to sit and have a discussion about truck moving forward, because as again, I said, personnel and equipment are two biggest needs and, yeah.
What trucks?
Engine three, rescue, utility truck, which is in this one, and one AT.
I've been instructed to ask all the department heads a question from a member who's up here. Other question, what would you do if you had to cut your budget by ten percent?
I'd cut capital. I have, I have no operating room to cut anything. As, as you look back in the past, I walk the line. New technology is hard for me to get. Certain devices that we'd like to have in the field that give patients a better chance, we can't afford. I mean, I'm happy to throw those numbers out there, but you know, ten percent is either people or capital.
Southwood Stock Electric is all done?
Yes, Southwood Stock Electric is all done. That's a good catch, Greg. I took that out of the capital, but I don't think your sheet reflects that.
So did that come in? I don't remember what the.
Forty-one thousand and change.
So that was the cost of the oil projects allocated, ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, we actually had more. I think we had eighteen from ARPA, twenty-one.
Yeah, I mean, it's a capital.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So it's a ten thousand dollars. Chris is like a fireworks show, right?
Hello, everyone. All right. So I guess challenges. Chris Barr, I'm the director of public works for Woodstock. So I guess challenges this year pretty much were being understaffed. Side of it, one of the accomplishments was, even though we're two people down, we did a lot of work this year and we were able to work with what we had. And yeah, so anyways. Short and sweet. As far as the highway budget is concerned, it's, I shaped it, if you will, here and there, everywhere. Bumps all over. One of the main lines, you know, I gave a thousand dollars more for street line painting. But on the flip side, I took ten thousand out of crosswalk maintenance. Crosswalk maintenance is more or less painted across walks unless you're redoing the whole road. I took out fifteen thousand dollars on paving because over the last two or three years, we have had a lot of paving done sidewalks, roads. So I thought maybe it was time to cut back and we could focus that money somewhere else. A lot of things stayed the same because it's such an influx with everything. We don't know. We could get more weather one year, more snow, flood.
I will mention as Chris goes through, the administrative budget, you'll see I did increase over to cut basements a little bit. Going on, if you guys went forward, joined the proceeds board, kind of resiliency and trying to change things, we won't fear. Coming where I use the gold.
Where is that?
It will be under, we're using stone green. Right now, Chris had thirty-five thousand. But I just want to point out that that's a way of goal as well. Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Oh, that's all right. Um, so there's really not been any major increases. I've taken out of, a little, a little bit out of parks. I took away from some of the curb construction and maintenance. And what my overall plan is, is to take that money and kind of move it into the capital and start getting us back on a equipment schedule.
Chris, can I ask about the rubbish removal? Is that, I would imagine that's just the, the service we pay, the contract for Casella?
Yes, that is. That's all for it's all the, the town buildings and all the bins around town. And I increased it a thousand dollars mainly because I put a bigger dumpster at the town garage for Wassel, any of the major holidays we have, so we don't overflow.
Do we think we need to increase it given, I mean, I know maybe the village has more input on this, but you know, I know we talked about and maybe we're seeing this elsewhere in, in wages and salaries, but seeing if we can increase how many times rubbish is removed from the village?
Yeah, I think we've talked about like during those high points because
Yeah.
we, we'd rather have it built in as opposed to walking the dog and saying, oh, my God, it's over.
Right, right.
Sorry.
And there's, there's a little bit of wiggle room with anyways. I don't know the exact number of what we did last year for Casella, but I think it was around like seventeen. Don't quote me on that.
Okay.
But I can tell you if we were to up like, instead of, I believe it's three days. If you were to do it five days, I can't imagine there would be that much of an influx as far as money.
Just that point, and again, my budget and I'm putting together with Robert, I increased staff from twenty-one thousand, twenty-four thousand. But I think that's also a conversation the both would seem to have about staffing and funding extra overtime for those busy seasons if we want or funding more money in this account line for the busy seasons as well.
Yeah. Somebody's working. Oh, by the way, can you, I'd rather that be.
Yeah. So anyways, I'm going to move right down to the capital. So this year we had correct me if I'm wrong, but we had forty-two forty-two thousand five hundred, I believe, that we set aside for greater payment. Well, the greater was paid off, so that's money we have. So I'm moving that to the capital and then I want to match it for either one good down payment on a new grader when we do order one, or we can find another home for it for either a truck or one ton for the village. Same thing, I put in another twenty thousand for a highway truck, six-wheel dump truck. I think roughly have about eighty-one thousand dollars set aside already. Probably still going to have to do some sort of lease-to-buy program, whether it's just maybe with the eighty thousand dollars that we have, it'll only be like a three-year note versus our typical five that we might have, but that's all. Kind of trying to talk to somebody about that. And another twelve thousand for a one-ton for either the village or the town because they're both up as it is. Probably four hundred thousand. Yeah. And yeah, so probably roughly four hundred thousand for a grader. And then when you're looking at a six-wheeler, you're probably looking at over two hundred thousand. And then a one-ton are typically hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand. That's kind of all my majors for highway.
And I think Chris is also working on the five-year capital plan as well. They will kind of lay some of these things out as well.
I just got a question. We've got, we've got any questions?
Oh, yeah, a question. We had to cut ten percent of the budget.
It would have to be capital. I hate to say the same thing David did, but like I said, there's so many influxes or variables that we don't know. Could get a huge storm and need more salt and sand one year. We could have a flood and need more material in the summer. So it's good to somewhat have those buffers in the normal operating budget.
Yeah, Chris, the streetlights. How many do we have? And that's not, I would imagine for electricity, for maintenance.
That's electricity.
It is for electricity.
And bulb replacement.
What's that?
And bulb replacement.
Wow, yeah.
You know, how many lights?
So we're on the hook for any of the green. You probably know this, I'm not sure, but any of the fiberglass poles that are in town.
Yeah.
The big tall gray ones. Those are GMP.
Okay.
So we had an arrangement with them way, way before me. Because they had to have some, Woodstock wanted a special ornamental light that nobody had, so they struck up a contract with Woodstock.
Don't say.
They would install them and they would maintain them at their cost. So when anything breaks, they fix them. But the only thing they will not do is a replacement. But we haven't yet had a problem with that.
Okay.
Then any of the green ornamental lights, like around, around the green.
Right.
Those are on us. Period.
Okay.
Which I think the end pay for those anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lighter. Bolt maybe, knock the, that knocked the electric bill down a little bit.
Do the lights have to be on twenty-four seven? Like, can they have sensors?
I, I can't answer that. I don't know. I, I can't answer that. I don't know. McDonald.
With their light sensors in terms of motion sensor, right?
Yeah. They have photo cells.
Light turns on or someone on the street light turns on. We don't need it on all the time.
When they're dark, it's on. When it's light, they're off.
Yeah.
And most of the lights actually have been converted to LED ballast, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wonder if that's an option, with our motion sensors as well.
Might be tough with traffic.
Yeah.
I don't know, place them.
Have them other countries.
I'm not saying it's impossible, I just. But we're with.
The light's not bright enough to see anything anyway, so.
Yeah.
Really doesn't matter.
We're the new star, that's all we need, right?
The star and the, the love of our community will light the way.
Yeah.
I, I know Roger has a question. I'll ask one more, Chris. So Chris, you kind of came in, uh, over the summer, so you've been here maybe six months as director. Has anything like, uh, anything you've learned and that's how many you want to share with the work, but kind of the running of the public works department?
Um.
Okay to say no is good.
No, I mean, uh, th- this is a lot more new to me. I mean, I've, I've been here a little while, almost eight years, so. I've had a pretty good general knowledge. Everything gets run, but this is kind of a new venture for me in front of a podium, so, yeah.
And to tack on to that, I'm glad you asked that question. Um, if you're, not that you have time to look five years down the road, but if you had time to think five years down the road, are there changes and improvements, like if you had all the money in the world, that. Truck routes, whatever, that you.
Infrastructure is huge.
Okay.
I mean, we, we all know Woodstock's an old town and our infrastructure's failing.
Yeah.
And that's unfortunately one of the things that's overlooked constantly. Cause we're always fixing what happens now and not, you know, what you could fix. But if you open up that can of worms, you're gonna be fixing a lot of stuff too, so.
They're spending a lot of money.
Yeah. Yep.
Trustee, did you have a question?
I just have a comment. From what I've seen so far and from what I've heard, Chris, you're doing a really great job.
Good, thank you. I appreciate that.
Don't tell him that. Exactly.
Greg's a fan of the tough love.
Roger, did you have a question?
Um, yeah, actually I have a couple of questions. Um, Eric, I recall last year that as a potential opportunity. There was talk about selling the second town garage. Um, and I wonder if that's still on the table and I was, um, concerned about the maintenance of crosswalks. Um, because from my perspective, the crosswalks. Are in pretty poor shape, especially, you know, and I understand it's the plow trucks going and they scrape them off. Um, but it's often pretty hard for people in cars to either notice them or care about them, so that may be their issue more. Um, but I'm, I'm just wondering about, about lowering the, the maintenance budget for that and, and if there's not some way to address. The kind of long-term viability of the crosswalks and visibility of the crosswalks. Thanks.
Oh, Chris, the crosswalks and I'll do.
Sure, uh, with the crosswalks, um, I'll, I'll be honest, there's lines, there's street line painting and then there's crosswalk maintenance. Usually that is just street line painting, period, which is, that's mainly the only thing that Woodstock paints is crosswalks and, I mean, we have a little bit of money that. We can do and buy our own paint. We have our own sprayer. We can do it ourselves. Um, so I, I wasn't really sure why that line was in there to begin with. I just was kind of thinking in years back, how much it costs to do the crosswalks and I know we were roughly an average of six thousand dollars, so I, I figured it, put another two. That could maybe give us enough money to do it in the spring after plows have scraped it all off and then we'll redo them. In the fall for the plows to scrape off again.
Um, and Roger, yeah, we've talked about the village garage as a potential, um. Thing we could sell, uh, we just never had a chance to look into it this year beyond just that knowledge, um, and what we did was we found out. Difficulty of where it's located and the river, uh, would make it a little bit more harder to sell because what could be built on there after the fact. Uh, but something we'll still pursue, uh, going forward.
Okay, great, thanks.
That's it, okay. You guys off set?
Yeah.
Chris.
Move on to sewer.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Yeah.
This one's pretty cut and dry, actually. Salaries and wages, same bump, three percent roughly, uh, with a little bit more for when guys get. Uh, another certification, they get a little bit of a raise. Um. Two, Eve, there's been a bump for sewer line cleaning. It's only, uh, three thousand dollars. Uh, manhole repair. Can't believe any glass is very. Yeah, those are all the same. Um. What was I calling that?
Manhole repair is less.
Yes. I have the same on mine. Oh, okay, it is fifteen, from twenty. Uh, we started doing some of them ourselves, actually, so that's cutting down the cost. We used to have twin state, uh, utilities come in. We give them a list of like six to ten manholes. They'd come in, they'd bust them all out, but now we've kind of started doing it ourselves, so it's a smaller list for that. Um. Bumped up, uh, operating supplies. From forty-five thousand to sixty-five thousand. Things are getting more expensive. It's also the cover cost of pumps. Um, which is, which is kind of rolled in also with, uh. Repairing maintenance as well and, uh. With the operating supplies too, you're looking at anywhere from eight to twenty thousand dollars to either, uh, rebuild a pump or buy a whole new one. And, you know, just at the main plant alone, there's three pumps that could go at any time, so you could look at sixty grand right off. Um. Budgeted again for. Little bit more for laboratory testing. Uh, one of the biggest things was de-watering, which is when we have a company come in, squeeze the stuff and haul it out of the, out of the plant. That's, it's always been under budgeted. It's going up. Everything's going up. They're one of the only companies that does it, so we went from eighty-five to a hundred and twenty. A hundred and twenty is the actual, that's what it is going to cost, so it's not really given any sort of buffer. It, it has been under budgeted for the last three, four years.
Chris, can I ask about that really quickly?
Yeah.
It's come up in our conversations with Hoyle Tanner too, and I'm wondering if there's a way to address it meaningfully in the budget, which is that. Right now the sludge gets de-watered and hauled away to New Hampshire, if I'm understanding correct.
Uh. Think it's New York.
Okay, gets hauled out of state.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, some of the facilities that are intaking the sludge are reaching their, their permitted. PFAs, sludge intake in the next five, six, seven, ten years. And when that happens, you know, not only do we have a Plan B, but I imagine the Plan B will also cost money and so. Do you have any sense of like?
Well, one of the things that we've talked about is, um, doing it all ourselves.
Yeah.
Period. That way we don't have to have, pay a company to come in and we could potentially get rid of one of the blue tanks there. But it would be, uh.
Costly.
Not as bad as you would think.
Okay.
Um, but I also think it would bring us closer in line with being compliant with the state. Kind of was what we're going on with, whether we're gonna build a new plant or not, that we have to. By twenty twenty-five, so if that's another process that we add to the plant, then, then. That could help with this budget.
Okay.
Cut it in half almost probably. I mean, you'll have some more upfront, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But over the long term and not. I don't want to just throw numbers out there, but I'm gonna anyways. I think we, I think we talked that it was about five years.
Okay.
It would probably pay for itself.
Okay.
So.
So what do we do with sludge that still gets hauled away?
It would still have to get hauled away, yeah. And we would have to pay per ton or yard or, I think it's tonnage.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And we can't spread it on Tom Devon voice's land.
I'm just gonna. I have a couple of other ideas.
Hey Greg to take it.
Get Phil, couple ideas, get some Phil. We'll talk about it over a year later. I gotta, I gotta. Me too. After we get done plowing.
Uh, I bumped up, uh, three grand on a sewer vehicle, sorry, other, other page. Uh, repair and maintenance supplies for the vehicles got bumped up three grand. Uh, another big thing which I totally overlooked, my apologies. The utilities and communications got bumped up significantly because. We have now been in full control of the Southwood Stock plant and we know now that it consumes a lot more energy and. A lot more internet than the old shack that was there.
Really?
Yeah, imagine that.
Yeah.
So anyways, it's all budgeted actual, so it's all accounted for. That's what it needs.
But will this also happen, you think, with the new plant if we?
Of course it will, unless we get those LEDs you're talking about. Oh, that's definitely, it's, that's what's gonna happen, but that's one of those things that doesn't get thought about either. Bring in these big buildings with all these new, all this new technology, then.
Did those, those lights get turned on, uh, made to motion, outside lights?
On the new plant?
Yeah.
Uh, I've not.
Southwood Stock?
I don't know. Don't know.
One more question.
Yeah.
How's it working out plowing with the fence gone? No?
Good as far as I know, yeah, a little bit easier. I mean, we'll get into the lawn a little bit more, but it is what it is. Um, and there's really nothing that's changed in the capital, uh. Yeah, there's been decreases. They took, uh. Two grand out of the reserve. What are you seeing that I'm not seeing, Robert? A line flusher, yeah, that's true. We're setting money aside for the line flusher to get a new one, but those things are like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so. We're taking that, fixing the flusher that we have. Basically reviving it and that should be plenty for what we use it for. That's all I got.
Any other question?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Two.
Thanks, Chris.
What's tonight? Uh, Robert.
Well, one, Robert Denzmore, Director of Finance. Um, so. Uh, my big challenges for the year is really just time management things. We do spend a lot of time. Um, doing the day-to-day, it's hard to really dive deep and look for the efficiencies. Get some of them just going through regular processes, but, um, being able to actually. Do like a more high, high level look into each individual process would probably generate a lot of efficiencies, but just don't have. The bandwidth at the moment to, uh, be able to do that. Um, my biggest success so far in the year has been, uh, we are now officially using the paycheck software that has been. Uh, that's been an ongoing project for the last five months for me and we used it for the first payroll cycle this. This, this week actually, um, there's still more work to do to get another piece set up, but as of now, we are, um, able to. Put the time sheets in there manually ourselves and it's processed through and to my knowledge, everyone got paid today. I haven't heard any complaints, so. To me, that's a success. Uh. Uh, my thing for the budget side of things, um, any increases that you see in the office administration, accounting, those are based off from the. Actuals that we've had of like, um. What is it? Like from the year to year. So if we're showing like a five percent increase on the year, that's how I would increase the budget or vice versa, if we're showing a decrease in the line item, that's. So my budget's based off the actuals from FY twenty-four, projected twenty-five and then twenty-six. Um, nothing major other than like communication, which is then under budgeted, it's for the last few years, so you're gonna see a significant bump there. Um, salaries, we didn't have a huge increase, um, mainly because. Um, I based it off the actual salaries, what they should be based off the contract, um, union contract that we currently have and then. A standard three percent increase for myself. Um, one, a couple of big talking points I want to do for the overall budget. Um, is I did touch on this prior, but we have a new way of tracking the healthcare costs. Um, and the way that's gonna look is when you're seeing, um, when you look at the budget, you're gonna see an increase in the select board budget of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars that's, uh, for. The health, the different types of healthcare we offer, whether it's regular healthcare, eye care, dental and, um, life insurance. Um, the reason we did this is because the, the way the budgeted had, budgeting had been happening is we've been doing it in the individual line items for the departments. But when we would go to run the budget, we were doing like our three percent increase that was. You know, the standard increase, well, that wasn't taken into account the healthcare costs that is typically higher than a three percent increase. Um, so this is, is gonna be a way to where we can more accurately track the employer paid benefits for. Um, for the retirement and your VICA and Medicare. So, um, like I said, it's five hundred and ninety thousand in the select board, a hundred and sixty-five thousand for the trustees and, uh, fifty-seven thousand in sewer. And in the sewer budget because we don't have a government body, it's under the executive budget. So I put it there because that would be the. The reporting entity or whatever, who oversees it. Uh, another new item to the budget throughout is the childcare contribution credit for tax, which is newly implemented July one of this year. Um, and those numbers are based off from, uh, based off from what we've been projecting. Um, and then with a slight increase because salaries will increase, which means the contribution credit will increase. Um, I know the town number I put fifteen thousand, not sure exactly what I put in for the village. For the sewer, um, at this moment, I can get those numbers to you after this meeting, uh, if you need it. Um, the tax itself is a point four four percent tax on gross wages. So that's what the number's based off from. So going forward, I am gonna do more, I'm gonna have a full salaries budget and then just do the calculation off that should give me a more accurate number. Um, and then, I mean, my goals are to continue to look at efficiencies, whether it's with the water company coming on board, what does that mean for. My staffing or just if we can find efficiencies in that, um, area, well, as far as billing, receiving of payments. Um, if you haven't noticed or haven't been in my, in, in our area, we have. Put a new computer with a screen in our area and that was specifically for processing tax payments, which allowed. Um, Jason to kind of, if he had larger payments come in like escrows, it allowed him to focus on that, but. Somebody can also just process payments in real time for the residents. So we can give them like a paid receipt that's printed off versus giving, you know, just stamping everything paid. A lot of people still like the stamps, but we're. You know, give somebody something that's a little more concrete than just a stamp and a initial, so. Um, that is, that's kind of where we've been. I've been working with each department head on the full budget and, you know. Whether it's given advice or just, you know, inputting everything into the system, Eric, together with them to present, Eric, this budget to you guys. That's all I got. If there are any questions?
No.
No, really excited that paychecks.
Thank you.
Trustee, do you have any question?
No.
Uh, same question. Have we cut ten percent for the regiment cutting?
We don't really have a capital budget. If we were gonna cut ten percent, we would be cutting out of an operating budget, uh, whether it's. You know, we cut a budget that would then go over budget because our operating budget basically is to meet the needs of the town. So if we were to cut, you know, it's either going to, we, our personnel is, we're, we're. Less, only staff will stay with as far as the hours needed to complete everything that we do. So like I don't foresee us any cost savings there and then like I said, I based my numbers off the actuals of previous years, so. If we were to cut those budgets, I would just have a negative impact and we'd end up being over budget because we're still gonna spend the money that we are currently spending.
That's Charlie, how third, what's, what's our best? Thank you.
Ten minutes is more than I need. My budget is pretty simple. I don't have as many moving parts as a lot of the presentations you've seen so far today. Um, you know, we're mostly just labor down in our office, a little bit of equipment and expenses and other areas. Um, with that said, you'll see the major increase this year. For many years, we've made do with five hundred dollars in machinery and equipment. This year, that's going to five thousand dollars primarily because my computer is a computer that Jay got new in two thousand nine. And the computer that Carol and Mary jointly use is the computer that I got new in two thousand fifteen. So, um, that's really the, the big change in the budget. Um, I guess accomplishments. We are in the process of completing our seventh election slash vote this year, so next year should, you know, it goes in cycles. Next year should be a lean year and we just have town meeting. One vote and that's manageable, but seven we make work also, so, um, I guess that's our accomplishment. Challenges, just, um, thinking long-term, nothing that can be, um, solved in the short term. But our biggest problem, as you all know, you've all been in the office, many people come into our office many times a day to transact business, there's a lot of traffic. And we are all in an area about as big as that table, so just the space constraint, but it's not easily solved because we need to be adjacent to our vault, so I couldn't just say, Eric, can we just have the conference room and use that as our office? It would give us enough space and we could spread out. That would be fine, but how do you get the vault up here? So just planting that seed for long-term planning, that's our biggest challenge, just trying to make our cramped quarters work, and we've been doing that. But it's, keeps getting more challenging each year, so I guess I'd entertain any questions that you have.
Um, I just have one, uh, request that I got from multiple constituents each year, which is they would like, uh, a line in the budget for I voted stickers. I just had several people this year that they were like, but why don't I get a sticker? I was like, I don't know, man.
Yeah, I don't know. Woodstock has never had those, and I've never been in a place that voted and didn't know about I voted stickers. In Vermont, I think we just vote because it's the right thing to do, but if the village trustees, even though I'm not under the jurisdiction of the village, if they want to spend money and kick in for I voted stickers, we would welcome that.
Trustees, do you have any questions for Charlie? There's a.
You got anything?
Um, Charlie, restoration of records, is that something we do on an annual basis?
We do.
Okay.
Yep.
And we send away?
Um. Yes, and right now we're in good shape. Um, you know, we have two hundred and fifty years worth of records.
Yeah.
I can't take credit for all of it. Sally Dana, twenty-five, thirty years ago, started us on the track of making sure that our older books were conserved and in good repair. Jay continued us on that track and I have just carried on that mantle, so, um.
Is that something we're statutorily required to do, restore the?
We may not be required statutorily, but we, it's a catch twenty-two. We have to preserve these records indefinitely.
Okay.
So if we have a book from seventeen eighty that is just crispy and falling apart and of no value to anybody, um, it's better to take preventative
Sure.
measurements now.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is, well, is digitizing them a part of the conversation in terms?
We have been digitizing. Our records are digitized right now back to, uh, nineteen thirty-two roughly, which may not sound like a lot, but just to give you a general scheme of things, um, under Vermont law by statute, we keep hard copies of everything, every town does, of primarily the land records, minutes of meetings, births, deaths, marriages, that kind of thing. And, um, the land records are kept consecutively in numbered volumes, so in seventeen eighty, we started with volume one. And right now, I don't do as much of the day-to-day recording as I used to, so I can't rattle the number off as promptly as Carol or Mary could, but I think we're on volume two hundred and ninety-five. Um, as a point of reference, my grandparents bought our house in June nineteen fifty in volume fifty. So from seventeen eighty to nineteen fifty, we had fifty books that were kept in a big old double-door safe in the back of the shoe store, and that was perfectly adequate. Um, in the fifteen years that Jay was town clerk, I think he filled two hundred volumes. You know, we, we put, put things in there at a much more rapid rate in the past thirty years. Some of that is because, um, years ago, we had fewer parcels. So everybody outside of the village had fifty acres, two hundred acres. So one person outside of the village might buy their property in nineteen fifty. They'd have a one-page deed, they'd get their mortgage, one page. In fifteen years, they'd pay off their mortgage and either Howard Gould or, uh, Bruce Dudley would walk over from the bank and write a marginal notation that it's paid off, so that didn't even add a page to the land records, and for fifty or sixty years, many people only put a couple of pages in the land records. Now, you don't show up for your closing, so you give a three-page power of attorney to Susan Ford or somebody else now. I pick on Susan, uh, because I can. Unfortunately, she's not here to receive it. Uh, oh, are you on there, Susan? Oh, there you are. I recognize your picture now. So anyhow, you, you, uh, have a three-page, um, power of attorney to your lawyer. The, you're the seller or the buyer, the other party can't come either, so they've got a three-page power of attorney. Um, the deed is maybe five pages, and then you get a fifteen-page mortgage. And in two weeks, the bank that you got that mortgage from assigns it to another bank, so there's another page of recording. And then you see that the interest rates have dropped, so you pay off that mortgage, there's a discharge of mortgage, and then you get another fifteen-page mortgage. And not only are there more pages being recorded per property, but as I said, there are more properties to report, so that's part of the reason why the vault space has been filling at such a rapid rate in the last thirty years. Um, we can make it work for the next, I've got plans for the next five years or so without any major dire, um, changes. But come down and take a look, I'm happy to give you a tour of the office, sometimes spaces at a premium, and we're getting creative with where we're storing our books in the vault. Um, I've probably digressed, I'm not sure if I'm answering the question that was
It was great.
asked initially or not, but.
Another question?
Same question for you, Roger. Hundred percent cuts forward for that.
Yep, ten percent, I guess we would continue with the fifteen and nine-year-old computers as the starting place. Um, we would take out the couple thousand dollars for the restoration of records, and it will be more expensive in a few years when it absolutely has to be done before those uh, irreparable, before irreparable damage is done to those irreplaceable records. And then we'd have to cut back on hours, I guess, because, you know, we don't have a lot to cut from in here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Roger had a question.
Um, yeah, I, I, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to ask this, but does this budget or, or this budget discussion cover the revenue from the clerk's office?
This does not.
No, uh, Roger, that'll be more in line when we do, the, the boards look at the overall budget and ask questions on it, which will be in a few weeks.
But I think probably to answer your question, a lot of these costs are offset by revenue. Um, those books that are filling our land records, uh, by Vermont statute, we receive fifteen dollars per page for recording. So sometimes people think that's excessive, but the big piece of that is that we're housing these documents indefinitely and there's an expense to that. The other, um, revenue source, uh, if you come in and you need a copy of your deed, we charge you a dollar per page, and that's under Vermont statute. Um, and it's not so much the cost of reproducing the document as it is, we've had this piece of paper here in our vault for fifty years, two hundred years, six months, and there's a cost to maintaining it, so, um, the, the price that attorneys and title searchers pay to get copies of those documents is not so much to reproduce them, but part of helping to underwrite the cost of indefinitely maintaining these records.
And Roger, to your point, uh, the clerk's budget right now is about two hundred thousand dollars, and we're projecting about forty-five thousand dollars of income and, and revenue for the next fiscal year in their office. So like twenty-five percent of the budget will be covered by the revenue they bring in.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
You have a question?
Thanks, Charlie. Last thing I'll say before we go, uh, weather dependence, uh, the people who are presenting tomorrow are aware they may have to present on Zoom. Uh, so we can't get in the office, I'll be here, uh, but the board members and others can be on Zoom if needed to go through the budget, so.
When do you think you'll make that decision?
Uh, later tonight if it turns on. I'll introduce Chris Barr. Yeah.
Any other?
Oh, I got none.
Motion to adjourn by the clerk.
Don't move.
Second, all of your favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, motion to the, for a second. All of your favor say aye.
Aye.